No, you better not.
He's mean.
He is mean.
I moved the tip of the top.
I don't want to move forward.
Figuring it out. Um, we ready? Rich did start? Wonderful. Uh, thank you everybody for coming to the Monday, October 2nd Board of Trustees Meeting. Um, let's rise for the National Anthem, Mr. Derso. Would you like to pledge allegiance? Sorry, pledge allegiance. Would you like to lead us?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, solid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, where's it come from? Um. This is gonna be kinda quick.
You know more. That set yourself up well.
So. So we're not gonna have, well, Ronnie, we're gonna do the public hearings to close them.
One minute I have to report, I was just looking for my reporting app.
Okay.
Whenever you're ready, we can, we can begin.
Okay, let's, uh, I'd like to have a motion to open up the public hearing portion of our meeting. Oh, sorry, I'll make a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see if I can do this right. The Elderfields Preserve, the county got our com- some comments back to our attorney Jeff Blinkoff. The, we need to, uh, we're not happy with all the changes, I believe?
Yes, I, I spoke with Kevin Walsh and the Superior County Attorney. A week and a half ago, I explained the concerns that I had. I'm good with the specifics of it, but I think we need to make some changes to bring it back more toward what it originally been.
So that being said, we told the county, we're not going to really discuss this tonight, and that's why no one from the county is here. And, uh, I don't know if I'm required to ask for allowed public comment now, or?
Well, I, I would ask that the man of the adjourn certainly to the next meeting, but I don't think, we should just ask if anyone was here. And then perhaps just hold their comments till next month because the county attorney isn't here.
Okay, so is anybody here to discuss Elderfields?
We were partially, well, talking general comments.
Okay, perfect, so I'll make a motion to adjourn Elderfields till next month?
That would be November
Six, at 7:30 PM.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Jenny, um, if you may, Janice?
For proposed local locket noise, Ronnie, should we, could we have the public hearing, or since we don't have the stenographer?
I mean, he's, I can always ask him.
It's fine, so you know what, we, we, since we don't have, the whole goal of not having the public hearing this month was actually to save the money of having the court stenographer, because we don't need to pass the noise ordinance today, might as well wait for the, uh, Elderfields Preserve one, so. Unless anybody has any comment on the noise ordinance, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this to the November 6th public hearing.
Is there a second on the motion? Trustee Frankel, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close the
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing, seconded by.
Second on closing the hearing. Trustee Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'm switching the order, I'm gonna start with new business, as I promised our friends from the Flower Hills Women's Club. That they could go to the, uh, very good, Frank, that they could come to the top of the meeting. So, um, if you'd like to discuss everything, go for it.
Thank you for looking out and supporting us, we're here tonight to request that we use the park this year three times. We did it twice last year, we had the first annual tree lighting, and then we have the Easter egg hunt, which both went very, very well. And this year, we'd like to add a concert in the park on Saturday, October 14th. So that's what we're requesting, the Christmas tree lighting and menorah tree lighting will be on December 3rd, and the Easter egg hunt is scheduled for March 20th.
Just explain the
March 24, 2024. No, it's not yet. No, I think March 24. Okay. Yes.
Just note, your concert is for who it's for?
Oh, yes, of course, thank you for reminding me that. So the net proceeds of the concert this year, we're going to donate to Mr. V from Manhattan High School, who, um, is suffering from ALS. So that's the charity that we've named it for.
And it's a concert for
Yes, and it's, um,
Adults.
Is it adult concert only, uh, no children? It's gonna be arrival at 5, music from 6 to 8. We're going to get a food truck that is, is worked out already, that's gonna park, I think, on that side of
On Stonetown.
Stonetown, exactly. Um, for people to purchase food and snacks if they want, and they're gonna bring their own chairs and blankets. And we'll clean up, we asked maybe for some garbage.
We'll, we'll leave you plenty of garbage.
And either for us, we promise that we will leave the park the way we found it.
Perfect, so the ask is for the village to waive all normal fees?
Yes, yes, correct.
I'm sorry, what was that, what was the date of the concert?
October 14th, it's a Saturday evening. Tickets are being sold online on our website.
And Ronnie, their application is complete, they have the requisite, um, insurance that's required for this? Okay, so for the other
Stone, you too, who's playing?
It's top secret.
Yeah. Top secret public.
It's a, uh, it's a country line band that, um, was supposed to perform, so if you really don't, did perform, uh, El Fresco last year, and it was very well received, so we were able to get that.
So I'll make the motion to waive all the fees that we normally would charge for the use of the park for the Easter egg event and for the concert on the lawn, subsequent to you applying, filling out the application with the proper insurance for the Easter egg hunt. And you have months and months and months to do that, but that's, that's the only ask. Do I, do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you once again for using our park, we love it. Uh, I'll switch back now to public comment. Wait, I'll wait for Jeff, cause he might have a question. Jeff, do you have a question? Okay, um, I'm gonna pivot to public comment, do we have any questions? Yes, sir?
Yes. Hi. My name is Jared Simon, nice to meet you.
Oh, it is Mr. Simon.
Yes.
Was it, I guess, Mr. Simon?
134 Woodhill.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet the trustees. Um, really, I actually wanted to come tonight to make comments on Oak Tree Lane, I know that's been a topic of discussion in previous meetings. And, um, really wanted to speak up on behalf of my neighbors and others in the neighborhood who continue to be very much interested and concerned with the status of the homes that are being purchased in Oak Tree Lane. I appreciate your note to me to reach out directly to St. Francis, I will do that. I would encourage others who are watching, who are attending, um, who are interested in this topic to also reach out to St. Francis, I think the more of us who get active and start asking questions, hopefully the more information we get. Certainly, there is, um, you know, a number of us in the neighborhood who write, converse about it, and I think more and more people each month find out about the topic and are generally interested. But again, really, I'm just here today to thank you for staying focused on the issue, and let you know that a lot of us are really very much, um, involved in this, in this effort, to try to understand what will be happening on Oak Tree Lane with those properties that are being acquired by St. Francis.
So, so I do recommend, which we already conversed on.
Yeah.
That you contact the hospital directly.
Yeah.
Because we don't have an application to act on yet.
Right.
So there's nothing for us to
Nothing that you can do at this point.
And I've expressed my desire for them to engage the community when they have a plan. So if they start hearing directly from the community instead of hearing from me, that might give them an impetus to, uh, present what their eventual plan is.
Great, thank you, so you have my committee to do that, and some other neighbors will also do that as well.
Gather them all together, and it's, I think it's, it's, it's more powerful when there's a bunch of you instead of individuals.
Yeah, yeah, and I appreciate that.
So what, what street do you live on?
I live on Woodhill, so my, my children all go to the bus stop on Oak Tree Lane, and actually, my son wanted to ask a question about Oak Tree Lane as well, because he goes to the bus stop there every morning. So I said, you can come home with me and, and ask your questions, you wanted to ask about the house?
It was more like a statement.
Okay, Mike, share the statement.
Ooh, oh, we like statements.
So, uh, so usually the mornings when I go to the bus stop, it's only four houses walk. But, so I think like the top thing that people were like thinking was gonna happen, is they're gonna use that area, block off Woodhill, to make that just like a dead end, and to like make those houses part of that. Um, so, so if that happens, then I don't know where I'll go for my bus, because I live like close to the side where like, it like comes in near the arcades.
Yeah.
Um, so if the bus has to come all the way on the other side of Woodhill, that might be really hard, because that's a long block.
I agree, so two things, so two things.
How old are you, Ron?
Eleven.
Well, I got two things, one, if the bus can't come to your house, you don't have to go to school.
Right.
So maybe that's a bit bad, but, but, but to answer the
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that.
But to answer, to answer the important part of your question, they can't just close a road.
Yeah, they
They just can't do what they wanna do without the residents and, and your residents, so without, in essence, your consent, they really can't do those types of things, they just can't do what they wanna do because they own the property.
And I would tell you, you, you'll be long graduated college and working before at this, anything changes over there.
So don't worry, there's not gonna be any road closures, parking lots, and unfortunately, the bus will still make it every day, so you have to go to school.
You gotta go to school, what's Philly on?
Uh, I live in London.
He just started there.
Oh, my granddaughter goes to London.
And did you have one more thing that you said about that house itself, you stand next to?
That house, where like the bus comes, there's that house.
This is the sled house.
The sled house.
There's a slumber, which is weird, that's why. But, uh, so anyway, every morning, there's like, there's tons of like spotted major flies all around, and like, it's kind of just like fast, because it's like, this broken that house that no one's living in.
Well, they, they are, so
Are you killing them all? Are you stomping on them when you're coming?
Yeah, so I guess it's good that like we're killing them, but like
So to answer your question.
Yes, because we were talking about the house.
So we've asked the hospital, and they, I think have complied with boarding the house up and trying to secure it.
I will check tomorrow.
Is it still gated and it looked sort of pretty unkept?
It's gated to keep it safe until they've secured the property properly, that's why the fence is up, because we don't want young children possibly going on the property if there's something that's not safe.
So what will happen, how, so it will be boarded up permanently or semi-permanently?
It's gonna be boarded up until they, um, decide what they're going to do with it, and there might be an application in shortly to do some work on the property.
Okay, and, and what about general maintenance, because like you said, there are a lot of lantern flies, I don't think they're keeping the property so well?
So, I, I, they're required to maintain the property, just like all residents, so. And if there's an issue, we'll have our code enforcer issue them a warning or violation.
Okay.
But I don't think there's any law against lantern flies.
Yeah, I think if there's some overgrown trees and chocolate
They probably like the tree of heaven that's growing in the backyard.
Yeah.
But we can, we can look
If you can inquire with them, we'd appreciate that.
So you never said, you never stated your name?
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I'm Louis Seven.
So I want to ask the art attorney a question, is there a minimum age, uh, to be on the board?
Yes, 10.
10, oh, okay.
Okay, right, he's 11, so, you know.
So next time there's a vacancy, you know, you may wanna, you may wanna run for the board.
Are you interested in being deputy mayor?
That would be really cool. You wanna be deputy mayor? Here.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and stay in contact, and let me know when you have conversations with the hospital, what they say, and then we can be all on the same page.
I will, thank you.
Lobster on the shelf.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's cute. Um, any other public comment, do you have any, sir, do you have anything to add? Okay. Yes, Mr. Schwartz?
I wanted to, um, as, as COVID just started, I, I wanted to do a last month, I wanna thank Rich and the Public Works Department for all their help putting up all these pictures. You guys did a amazing job, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. And thank you once again, Mitchell, for, um, building our lovely museum. And I think we have one other picture to come up, we're gonna add, right? So we got one new photo.
Oh, you weren't here last one?
No.
We have, yeah. You did a great job.
Yeah, there's like a little guy here on the back.
Yeah, you gotta go look at all, some of the pictures.
I can spoil the pictures.
And we're gonna keep on adding as we get more stuff in, so thank you once again. Alright, into public comment, um, let's go to old business. No old business?
Nothing old.
This is wonderful. Any other new business? Well, I wanted to give that up, but any other new business to cover? No, perfect, approval of minutes, I'm, Ronnie, you can take over this one. It's all yours again.
Taking another motion to approve minutes of September 12th meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Frankel, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, the treasurer's quote, Suzanne is not here tonight because of her family affairs. Um, just one thing I wanted to know, we did pay the Fort Washington Fire Department. However, their, um, invoice was over the contract amount. We paid them what we owed them, but I just thought that was, um,
Did you give, did you give them a phone?
Did you call Chris?
Well, we put a note on the, on the invoice and asked them to please
Just call, call Chris and help, help her, right?
Like it might have been a mistake.
Yeah, so it's not a mistake.
It was a mistake last quarter, well, last half also.
They may have it, they may have it
Last half, and we go, well, I guess then they'll reduce the bill for the next
Wait, but we didn't pay the overages. We didn't pay the overages, did we?
No, no.
So they were, it's probably running in their accounting system, and it's still
I just wonder how many villagers are just paying what they receive, working at their concert.
I'm willing to bet they look.
Yeah.
Like, I know Rosson definitely looks theirs. And I know we look at ours.
They look at ours.
And I assume we'll be able to
I, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything.
It's probably a clarity mistake, but if, if you wanna reach out to Chris, since you have the relationship with him.
Yeah.
Or Ronnie, give him, send him an email and just say, hey, listen, guys, get your bills straight.
Yeah, forget, forget your bills.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions on the, um, claims?
No, this is a light month, which is always hard. I'll make a motion to, um, approve the claims dated August 2nd.
August 2nd?
2nd.
AJ Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
The extension for
But guess what, I don't see
There's no ARC, so
You don't need, you don't need to, uh,
No, she's not on there.
Nope, there's no part of
I told Peter he did not have to attend, so there was no ARC this month.
Right.
Uh, engineer for court, I did wanna let you know that, um, our engineer, she was one exact mother passed away, um, a, a day or two ago. Um, and it was his father six months ago, um, so the bill, you know, sent him an arrangement. And Public Works, Rich, do you have anything?
No, I'm running the public enough, uh, that's
Yes.
The corner, you should toot your horn, that, that looks great. The corner of, um, right here.
Oh, yeah, you guys have a working aisle, wow.
It's really, we gotta give credit where credit's due, it's Kevin. It's Kevin's corner.
Oh.
Kevin wanted to do it.
It's like Kinda's corner, I like Kevin's corner.
It's Kevin's corner, Kevin really wanted to work on that, and said, listen, wait till all the other projects are done, and Kevin was out there today laying all that stone, which we were able to get at no cost to the village, so thank you, our neighboring villages, for giving us excess stone, because that was very good.
And I wanna thank Rich and his group for cleaning the moss off the paths.
Yes.
That was big, yeah.
We gave him $200 to buy the proper tool to, to clean it.
There was one little spot down by the, the playground.
Yes, with a professional swivel.
Why, okay.
Yeah, and they helped you with the power washers and, and those were great.
Yeah, there is some left there, okay. Not to be picky.
Maybe curse and spray, because that was a wonder water, okay?
You like using
Everything was, uh, that box, the playground, it was full of water, it looked like a pool.
Do you like using that spinning thing, it doesn't, doesn't it like, don't you get wet, it spins like it, it like swishes back at you?
The power, no, it looks like a, it looks like a mop, almost, like a
Cause I've used the one, it's like a disc.
Rich got so, Rich, Rich was so much less wet when he got him the right
Really, because when it spins, it like kicks all the water on your feet, so you think it all went.
It keeps it all contained inside.
Oh, this has a, oh, this is a fancy, we got fancy.
Uh, one more question, the walking, running path, does that, you wait till the leaves come down and then clean that off, or is it
So we'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Just as we're trying to, around the whole village with that rain, there's a lot of spots that have like the rocks, you know, but you don't, like, there's a couple over there. They're, they're everywhere, so, you know, it's gonna take them a lot longer, but he's making his way just at country club, I'm sure he, he did country club, and he's working his way around, so it's gonna be a couple of days.
You know, Rich, it's also like a little tripping hazard, you know, you know where the playground is? There's that asphalt path, and then as it goes toward the swings, that direction, he kind of
Asphalt, that's the one that caved in on us.
Yeah.
Cut that out and redo that hole.
I noticed that yesterday when I was there, and it's like someone could trip and fall.
What I might do is cut that whole piece out and just make it gravel for now, because it's a little bit safer than
You could do that.
Asphalt, I can get asphalt, but that's gonna be, it's gonna be closed, because Rich sounds like
Yeah, they're gonna close, they're gonna close.
I might just do gravel, just so he thinks it's flat.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, just fill in the gap with gravel.
Next year, I'll, I'll do a full asphalt path.
Yeah, yeah.
So Rich, since, first of all, thank you for the, uh, replacing the air conditioning system here. Since we tried to get it fixed, and unfortunately, it was not replaced. We're, Rich just got us some quotes on generators, look, it's all word about generator, because I think we're gonna try to approve this today.
So we have our generator, which is not functioning enough. It's close to 20 years old. To repair this generator, we're talking close to five, $6,000 repair. And that's not including if something else were, you know, were broken on it.
What size is it?
What kind is it?
What size?
It's a 30
26, I thought it was 26,000 kilowatt.
The new one, we're, we're gonna go a little smaller because of, we're, they oversized this one for that
You can't get a 30 kilowatt generator anywhere in the country, right now.
Well, that's where, if you look at the paper
So, let, let, we'll get to that, address, address what's, what the problem first.
So this one, obviously, it's no good, I mean, it's not worth going four, five, $6,000, and it, and something else works. To replace the generator, uh, for a 26 kilowatt, you're talking, the lowest bidder was 9,888. And that's a Generac, they have that in stock. The reason, I, I don't know why we put such a big generator in this building, it was not necessary. For what we need, we, we could easily run a 26,000 kilowatt generator.
So it was oversized, so what happened with the panel, that, the current generator only works on one of our electrical panels. It was never wired to work on the second panel, and I think also the transfer switch is not the right size, so we bought a big generator for not a right purpose, maybe that was the only generator that was available, 20 years ago. So that generator unfortunately is oversized for the application that's used, so it's speaking with, Rich speaking with generator companies, was able to find the right size for that single panel. Now, the other option we have is to spend at least double the amount, if you look on the second column of the spreadsheet, and go for a whole building generator, add this, add connection to the second panel and do the larger transfer switch. But I think that's kind of overkill, because in the 20 years we've had this generator, we are okay with half the building being powered, the main thing that needs to be powered is the garage, so the equipment, the garage doors, so if we have a storm
And the office
And the office.
Everything
The network.
Right, the, the, the key things to keep this village running, except for the air conditioning, that's the one thing that's not.
That's, that's the one that takes the most load, and that's what, that's why it's on the second panel by itself, is that's what it takes.
But we've never had an issue in 20 years of the air conditioning not functioning during the short terms of blackouts that we've had, including when we had superstar sanding.
It was freezing during sanding.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't
Because the heat is
Right, but to me, the key
What, what, what's the heat?
Gas fired, right?
Yes. The, the key thing to me is having that garage operational, because if it's a snowstorm, they're not gonna be able to get the equipment out, and I don't want Rich climbing ladders and having three guys lift those giant garage doors and closing.
I would go for this, that $9,000 one, and just get it over with before any pluzards or anything.
And, and it's in stock, so we could kinda ask them to do it soon and
People are waiting, people are gonna wait a year for 30 or 36.
That's
But it's just, yeah, there's just not, there's not
What, the garage was? The small one does, it's, it's the, yeah, it's the air conditioner, it's that, like, that stuff is what runs on that second panel, I guess that's how you put that.
Is it a subpan, is it a subpanel, or it's a separate panel?
It's a separate panel.
It's a separate identical panel.
It's, yeah. But for that, we need a big generator, that's why I put, there was a 36,000 kilo, 36 kilowatt and, uh, 38, but remember what you were saying, the lead time on the Generacs are almost
Yeah.
20 weeks, so
It, well, that's good, 20 weeks.
And I just don't
You get it in 20 weeks, that's good.
That's early.
Yeah, 20 weeks, you're not gonna get
And I don't think it's a good use of village funds to have a, a double-sized generator.
I don't think it's a good idea, we don't have a generator that's working one.
Well, that's why, so that's why Rich did it work, and he got us three quotes, because you're going to see, we're going to adopt tonight a new procurement policy, so this adheres to a procurement policy, so thank you, Rich, for doing all the work and getting the quotes, I'd like to make a
I just have a question.
Oh, yes.
Is it possible at some point that you should to add on a second smaller generator? I'm just thinking with like the weather being what it is, it's like, it's to be like, like 125 degrees every day, and this becomes a cooling center?
I'm, I'm sure we could do something like that if we needed to, and have a second generator. It, it, it's a possibility, but I, I, I don't, let's cross that bridge when we get to it, I don't think it's necessary.
I think the point is all taken, though, because if we're gonna, if we're in the middle of the summer, that's the most likely time for a blackout, really, except for a storm, and then if there's no air conditioning in this building, and it's 95 degrees or 100 degrees out, the building becomes almost useless.
I mean, we can all work at home, stay, but if this needs to be cooling center
I, I, I don't think it's necessary for this to be a cooling center. It's, it's, it's a nice one to have, but I don't wanna spend money on a generator that maybe we need to have. But AJ, we, we spent a lot of money before you came on the board to, um, make us a cloud organization there. So actually, if Suzanne was here, she would tell you that we just turned on our new financial software today, which is cloud-based versus a server one, so we don't, if we have another COVID or storm situation, the building could close, we could operate remotely, we don't have to be, well, the office doesn't have to be in this building. Rich still needs to be in the building, because we need to operate our vehicles.
Well, then I have to wear shorts and a tank now.
So, um, thank you, Rich, for all the work on this, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the purchase of the Generac 26 kilowatt, uh, generator from Jax Electrical.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just to let you know, we are applying the report grant for this, so hopefully, plus the village.
Right.
That's a 10-year warranty on the generator.
Good.
What kind of news will be about the time of going to market?
That's a possibility. Um, anything else from, I don't, anything else, Rich? Wonderful. Alright, so we're good. Ronnie, administrator's report.
Okay, yeah, speaking of benches, so the benches were the last thing we were waiting to receive, so that we could apply for our $50,000 grant that was given to, to us by Anna Catherine in 2019. Um, so that went out today, electronic, we had by mail, and hopefully, we're getting that cash soon. Also, uh, we, with the completion of our road safety project this year, we were able to submit to the $125,000 transportation grant given to us by, um, former Senator Elaine Phillips, previous to that. Um, again, that was all sent out today, so it's already exciting, those have been like over five years in, in, you know, the work, so, um, thrilled to get them out. Um, the other thing is I want to thank the board for allowing me and Suzanne to go to my classes, they were amazing this year, I came back with my notebook full of stuff, updated policies and, uh, procedures. I wanted to also mention the Steve Monpass, Edmonds went live today. Oh, um, I prepared the 2024 calendar of meetings, if you wanna just pass that down, um, so, you know, just before anybody's got any conflicts, of course, let me know. Okay, we had this, um, service for, IT provider called Know Before, and what it does is it offers training on how to avoid uh, clicking on their emails, their links, their scams, how about to be hacked. Um, and there are required trainings that we have to do quarterly, they also send out like, like fake emails, and you're supposed to, um, you, you can tap, uh, there's on, on the upper right-hand corner of your, um, app book, there's a uh, report spam button that you, if, if you suspect something, you just kinda click that. Um, I just did, wanted to remind everybody that, um, I get a report, quarterly report, on how everybody's doing with their training, and a lot of you have not done your training, so we're really encouraging you to do so, it's really very helpful. Um, the other thing I wanted to remind you guys of is that it's annually required that you do sexual harassment training, and, uh, while it's in work oh, no, while it's in the workplace, it's just for the employees, sexual harassment training. Um, the program that I've been using, it's, uh, by the city of New York, it has all of the required elements in any state-proved program. The program that I've been using, it's, uh, by the city of New York. It has all of the required elements in any state approved program. It's really easy to watch, so you know, kind of like, okay, I watched it, you know, it's not, it's not painful. And then you can click on a little certificate and send me a copy of that, so I don't know that you did it.
My warning, if you take that training, don't not finish it, because I had a stop for something, and it, you start from the beginning. So you lose, I lost thirty minutes of forty-five minutes worth of work.
Is it through there, is it through the city website? It's like, it's through the city?
There's a link to the, to the city website.
It's an email Ronnie sent, yeah, it's an NYC...
It's a free training, um, you know, I, I looked into the one that we get through our insurer, but you have to click on a hundred thousand places to get into it. This is just so easy.
Okay, there it is.
The other thing that, um, maybe we should put under all this is our, um, one of the things I did, based on what I learned in NICON, is I updated our financial, our purchasing policy. To reflect best practices in government. And it's in your packet, and I know the mayor wanted to, to just pass out the copies of the old policies, so you could just contrast it to, um, what we're looking at now.
The old policy was, was only pretty much for larger, um...
It, it, uh, professional services is not changed or different anymore? No?
Professional services have to go under R two.
Under over ten thousand dollars.
Professional service doesn't come under competitive...
Right.
But we still follow your policy.
Really, no, something that's bound over, over ten thousand, they go R two.
No, I mean, if something, I mean, like if something was escalated at like, like six thousand dollars, you would still wanna do an R two.
Well, you don't have to.
You don't have to, but our policy makes it have to. It's really best practice. This is the old one.
Yeah, so I, I, I like the new one. I mean, we, we kind of been doing some of this anyway.
We've kind of been doing it, we've kind of codified it.
Anytime, right, we haven't codified it, but we've been kind of following this anyway. Anytime Rich has projects, I always ask him to get at least two quotes, and three if preferred. Sometimes it's impossible to get three quotes on certain projects, but we at least do that. Like example, this week, there, we're having someone coming to fix the cement in front of the building on staircase. So, Rich, you got three quotes or two?
Two.
Two was okay.
Yeah, but we tried to get three at the time, I think, and one of the other guys was involved.
You mean the concrete?
What did I say, cement, cement?
You wouldn't want a cement wall, right?
Oh, no, I'm specking cement instead, because it's gonna piss you off. Fixing the railing and doing whatever medium you wanna call it. So we've already kind of been following that policy anyway, even though we didn't codify it. So I think I'd like to, I guess we need to vote to pass this, correct?
Yeah, to amend the power, a motion to amend the power.
So I will make that motion. Seconded by?
I'll second it.
Do a favor?
Aye.
And if we need to modify it in the future, we can modify it in the future.
At any time.
Okay.
Do you have any report?
I did, yeah. Um, there were two matters that the board took action on at the last ZDA hearing. One was on the eighty-eight country club ride. This was actually an application seeking to amend a prior grant to the board. They had granted a variance request for the placing of a generator in the backyard of the property. Uh, the applicant ended up putting it closer to the edges of the property line than had been approved. As the board reviewed the, the, um, new application, and actually the applicant came back with several different options. It appeared to the board that in fact, that the new proposal really would not have any negative impact on the surrounding area. It's tucked back in the corner. The neighbors won't notice it. I think the actual neighbor that is closest to the generator is not a private resident, if I'm correct. But in any event, it's very screened. They had photographs of it, and there's a great amount of vegetation, so, uh, the application was granted. The second that the board took action on was on seven Maple Drive. And this was an applicant who, I believe, also previously received approval for construction of a garage, and what they ended up...
No, it's not seven Maple, seven Maple's place.
Oh, my apologies, I read it wrong address. Uh, this was at, um...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven Northwoods. So they had been approved for a, a garage, um, and what they ended up learning as they were building, framing, was that the upper portion of the garage would really serve well as an office. And, uh, they did everything right by coming back to the board to ask for an increase in AR, because the use of habitable space would, would cause that. You won't notice any change from the outside. There's no visible change in the volume, which it has no impact beyond, uh, the particular use to the board felt that it would be an appropriate grant, and approving.
Thank you.
Good.
Wasn't Karen that one? The guys with the overhang over the, of that, of the stairs?
Thirty-three Birch Hill?
Yeah. That wasn't good?
Oh, my apologies, that was on the other page. So thirty-three Birch Hill, everybody's correcting me tonight, my apologies. This was, uh, the applicant was seeking to construct a roof over a cellar entrance. Um, and quite frankly, this was a very small request. It was really to allow for drainage. The architect came and explained that in order to put a drywall, if they had to put a drywall where this property is, there's a great amount of clay, and you would have to go like thirty feet down before you could effectively put in a drywall.
If you're lucky, thirty feet.
What they really were just doing was to, in order to control drainage, you just sort of put roofing over. Uh, and the board felt it was de minimis, which would be noticed, really, when you consider the detriment to the applicant if they had to dig down for that drywall, it just was unfair to the applicant, and they did approve it. And unless anybody corrects me, I think that was the final.
I was the only one.
Was the address on that last case?
Uh, that address was at thirty-three Birch Hill.
Is that the house that we were talking about? With the, those panels in the front, those white panels? The one I showed you picture? That I said did ARB?
Can't remember.
They had been ARB, Birch Hill.
Yeah, that house.
They had been to ARB, thirty-three Birch Hill. TJ Gustello is the architect, Power, Power P Architects. I think they said they'd been to ARB.
Thirty-three Birch Hill?
Did you know that? Just kidding.
No house?
Didn't realize.
Um, no, they're just doing a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, it's my, that's what I, that's my point. It's right around the corner. Oh, Birch Hill, I'm sorry, Birch Hill. I can't, I can't put it, dig a drywall. It's, it is nothing that, uh...
Right.
Sounds like a swamp.
Do you have your report?
Yes. You need anything, Frank?
No, good.
I'll be forward. Alright, couple things. One, Port Washington Water District allegedly is going to start the Stony Town well construction soon. But myself, Mr. Lewandowski, and I believe Ms. Schatzkamer will be meeting with the Port Washington Water District tomorrow morning to understand what their plot and plan is.
Is Rich gonna be around tomorrow morning? Because you, you might wanna like, do a little welcome.
Yeah.
And it's on the road.
My Gary.
Alright, Rich, you're invited to. So we'll do that. Our, our court had the New York State Court Security Audit, and we passed with flying colors. There's a couple of small suggestions they made for security, and we're going to see if some of them are reasonable. Like one of them, they wanted us to bolt down all these chairs. That's, that's kind of difficult. Well, I guess at court, someone might pick up a chair and throw it at poor Judge Reisman, or Judge Peeper. So like...
Put bricks.
Wait, wait, wait. That was their recommendation. They wanted all the chairs to be bolted down.
You don't have to bolt, you don't have to bolt them down. You get these clips that clip the back.
We use it to vote and that kind of thing. It's a multi-purpose room. It's not just...
They're just looking at it from a court perspective. So there's some things, there's some things we can do, and some things we can't do, like that table there, they'd like that bolted to the ground, too. So we're gonna see what makes...
I want the mayor, can I, can we go back to thirty-three Birch? So they said, there is a drill rig there. There's a drill rig there today on, on the site, you know, one of these tall drill rig.
That might be a Peter question.
Yeah, are they?
They're doing a pool there, too.
No, but they're, they're drilling the front.
It's my, it's my boss, the contractor.
Well...
Because there's a lot of, so it's plain that area, you know?
Yeah, so I thought you had said they can't put a drywall in, that's why they're putting the cover over the stairs.
This is the, the roof over the cellar entrance.
But they're doing it because of runoff, is that what you said? And they can't put a drywall in, because they have to go too deep?
In that rotation. I don't know if they're putting a drywall somewhere else.
They, they have a drill, a huge forty-foot drill rig in the front lawn.
Can we check for here?
Yeah.
Alright. Check with the car.
No, not, look, like that, I'm pretty against it.
It's right, it's right behind me, you know, so I've seen this. Gary wants the meeting to get moving. So who wants to join you? I think, I don't, I don't wanna say why. New York State, okay, um, we had our New York State Controller Fiscal Stress Monitoring, and just like last year, we got the no designation rating, which is the lowest rating a village can get, so thank you, everybody, involved with that. We talked about generator. Northern Boulevard, they have pretty much finished the paving, or the repaving of Northern Boulevard by the village. However, I got notification that's starting tomorrow, but I think they started it today. They're doing some milling and repaving on Old Northern Boulevard, which is a separate project.
Yeah, they had, they had the things up.
They should open it to gas lines.
Well, now they're, they won't rip it out for a couple of months, and then they'll put new gas lines in.
No, the Old, Old Northern Boulevard is different than what you're talking about on Willis Avenue. That's a different...
Leading to Willis Avenue.
Yeah, it's right down the hill.
Yeah, it's more wide up here, down the hill.
Down the hill.
They ripped it up on the right side.
But they're doing by Atlantic Blueprint, they're doing...
Yeah, yeah, but they, they ripped it all down, it's more wide.
One of those is lots of work. We got notified that they're doing some repaving, so I'm just making the announcement. And for Gary, I will announce once again that October twenty-eighth, the Port Washington Water District is doing the pharmaceutical pickback day, and we're gonna partner with them as part of that.
Where's it being done?
It is being done... It, uh, I'm guessing it's probably at their water district building, because that's where it was last year when I dropped off some pharmaceuticals I had.
Which is where?
On, what's that road? It's...
Sandy Hall.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sandy Hall.
Sandy Hall, but I will find the address and put it in my notification. They emailed it to me, but they didn't even allow me the address.
We can reconfirm tomorrow.
Oh, we see them, that's right.
Do we have a toaster in the front?
I'm not following.
Sorry?
Do we have a flyer right in front of it?
No, that was, that was the Port Washington Fun Day, which came and went. So I took that flyer down today.
But is it next weekend?
If there's another one, I don't remember which, there's another...
The Town of North Hempstead, it was rained out, but the, but that was rained out, Randall. So, um, the Town of North Hempstead is this weekend. It's also a stop event at Ford Beach.
Is it?
The stop pollutant event.
That, that one was postponed from Saturday?
Actually, that, that happened, but the Fun Day is twelve to five.
Okay, but that's doesn't, that's no pharmaceutical pickup on that day?
No.
Okay. That's all I have from the mayor's report.
Any trust fees?
Oh, sorry.
I have a question. So I was at a, uh, the women's event for the Village of Flower Hill, and, um, last week, and this woman started talking to me, and it was none other than Mrs. Young. But what she did mention, which, actually, so I thought I'm gonna follow up on this, because it was, um, she asked about the proliferation of white vinyl fences in her neighborhood, and could people just put up fences? So I did drive through there, and you know, if you're going on Port, if you're on Port Boulevard, there are a few houses with these, I don't particularly care for white vinyl fences, but there are a number of them, but then I thought, in her, she's right. And I know if I lived next door to a, a person who put up a white vinyl, like, five foot six, I would be...
Like I do.
Like I do.
You have one?
I do. Oh, yeah, my neighbor not only ran it to the side of my house, but all in the front of my house.
Okay, so my point, just like my astroturf thing about, you know, fake grass, and now we have a law. What is our policy, and is it worth reexamining? In the interest of the quality of, you know, our, our neighborhood, is it worth examining what our fence policy is?
I would, I would get rid of the white vinyl.
So the fence policy allows, funny, it allows...
But maybe it shouldn't, because that's something that I can champion and say...
You can champion it. I, I will not support that one bit, but if the residents are interested in it, and the board is interested in it, that's great.
Well, I wouldn't see why. I think it's a discussion point. If we're trying to maintain a certain look in our, in quality of, you know, just like we don't want people putting astroturf on their front lawns, that was, that passed. Maybe we don't want people putting white vinyl five foot, like, do we have a fence height?
Yes, we do. It's in the code.
Is it, what is it?
It's five feet for all properties, except for those that back up onto Port Boulevard and Middle Neck Road. Those portions can be six feet.
So you mean you could put a five-foot vinyl white fence?
Yeah.
I just don't...
You can't put it all around your property.
Yeah, but you could still...
In the backyard. You can't put it in the front.
Well, you can't, you can't come forward of the front plane of the house.
Correct.
However, the problem is, is that when you have one house that's like this, and another house that's diagonal, that white fence, in, like in my situation, comes all the way past the front of my house, all the way out, almost to the end of mine.
We should think about...
Because it's the angle of the house.
Right.
Yeah, we should think about, uh, what the neighbors, yeah, I agree, Frank, you know, you should calculate it based on your neighbors too, not just your own house.
Right. I don't know, is it, is it worth reexamining, or you think it's a dead DOA type decision?
So many houses out of compliance in the village.
Well, but the difference is, hold on, anybody, anybody who currently has it would be allowed to keep it. Now, you're not gonna shell everyone ripped down twenty years ago.
But I'm saying going, going forward.
Well, you, they would be like, yeah, they would be exempt as a existing non-conforming.
Yeah, but going forward, so you have to have more white vinyl fences.
I think what we need to be careful about in this conversation is, is there's the cheap vinyl, and then there's the, the nice-looking, I wouldn't call it vinyl, let's call it compo, you know, not natural turf.
Right.
So I think that's where we're gonna have to figure out, that's where, what's, it's a little more complex about it, because get, going to just say, you can only use wood, it becomes a maintenance thing, and people aren't just not into that. So that's why they do the use of vinyl. I mean, I don't, I don't particularly like it either, uh, but I do understand what the purpose is, so... But there are, happens to be other products, maybe not as cheap as the cheap vinyl stuff that you can use, that still has the benefits of being low maintenance, but look a little nicer than what I would choose.
Would you be, would you be against any vinyl, or only white vinyl?
No, no, I, I feel like, does Monty Park, do, do they allow those fences?
They don't, they don't, they have no fences in Monty.
Okay, so that's, okay, so...
Well, you can have a fence on your sideline real.
No.
I just think that as you were going forward, and I drive, I'm like, you know, when you see these houses, that you wonder, how did that get passed? But it's so out of left field compared to other homes. If we're trying to improve the way our town looks, maybe I'm picking, picking on the wrong thing, I've been using the word vinyl, but I'm, like, five-foot fences?
All of our fences are five feet.
But why do they need to be? Is that just because they always work?
So, so the, I'm Landmarks Commissioner for Town of North Hempstead, and actually, Landmarks now does allow white vinyl if it's not visible from the street. So if you have a backyard or whatever. But we require a decorative white vinyl. So in other words, a lot of the white vinyl fences have a twelve-to-eighteen inch section on top, that you can either get lattice, or they have a different... We also don't want the flat panels. You have to have some kind of decorative panel. So like Gary was saying, there's, there's a whole myriad of, you can go to Home Depot and get white vinyl fence that's cheap, and you know, baseball goes through it. You know, if your kids hit a ball. And then you can go, and you can go to, you know, high-end place and get a really, really good one that looks really nice. It's detailed, it's... And they come in all different colors. I don't know why everybody...
That's a good point for the upper band thing, that, that would make...
It makes a big difference.
Makes a difference.
And, and, but it comes in a lot of different colors, so... And you can see, I think on Port Washington Boulevard, there's a few that are like a beige color, they're not as offensive. Personally, I would prefer like either wood stockade, or, you know, a wood fence, but a cedar wood fence of the same dimensions as the white vinyl is, you know, three times the price.
Yeah.
So, you know, they're, they are economical, but they get dirty, you have to clean them, you know, it's, they're not...
So, and so if somebody wants to put up a fence in their yard now, do they have to come and get a permit?
Yeah.
Right, and if it's five feet or below, and it's, and it's a certain setback, when they're, they can just put it up?
Correct.
And it doesn't go to ARB, right?
It's a fence permit, no. It's been that way for twenty-plus years, or fence permit?
And a lot of people have swimming pools, so for a swimming pool, you have, there's a very strict requirement. The New York State Court is four feet, but nobody by four foot, four feet, every ten...
We allow six feet for a pool.
Huh?
We allow six feet for a pool.
Yeah, everybody is, is either, is six feet, even though the, the state does allow four foot in certain conditions, but, so... And though, and vinyl fences are very safe if you have a pool, because they're very hard to climb. There's nothing to grab onto, so...
Okay.
I mean, chain link would be the best thing, because you get a fence, but you can see through it. But then again, people want privacy, so...
Slap center.
Yeah, that, that's what... Yeah, that's even worse. Or the green, my neighbor put the green stuff on before they put the white vinyl.
I mean, that is part of the issue with those panel fences, especially along Port and Middle Neck.
I mean, like, yeah, Port Washington.
You want the acoustical benefits, you want, so.
Just ugly. I mean, what's the matter with the arbor vady?
It takes up space.
But I, I think, I think.
And then they grow into our row.
I think Gary's point is, you know, and I unfortunately suffered the consequences of the board not looking at the neighboring house on both sides to see that it would impact the two houses on the sides.
That might be something to adjust.
We can, we can look into that because I think that is a problem.
Get permission from the neighbor, the letting neighbor.
Just in the interest of going forward, just don't mean because we've done it for 20 years, it's right.
If anybody's interested in forming a committee to look at this, Mary Jo will lead the committee.
I don't know enough about it, other than aesthetically, I might.
I'll just say if you want to.
Astroturf, how ugly it is.
That's what you need to know, they're ugly.
I mean, it is, it is a little different, and, you know, we did, we didn't say you couldn't use astroturf in the rear yard. And we're also saying you can't use any fence in the front yard.
Right.
So there is some legislation on this. It just happens to be that, you know, in some, in the case where Frank's house is, where you end up with these funky conditions, or when we are looking at rear yard, the rear lot lines of.
So maybe it just needs to be tweaked.
Yeah.
Maybe it doesn't need to be overhauled, maybe if you're saying.
Here's my situation, so I could only put a fence to here, but he put a fence to here. So he put it this way and ran it all the way back, so. Yeah, so all you see in my house now is a big white.
But Frank, that doesn't, can't you put a fence in front of it or bushes?
He put, he, he did. My neighbor's great.
I'm saying that you could.
My neighbor's a great guy. He did, he did a beautiful job, no, no, no. And they will eventually, I'm not saying anything that, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, he actually asked me, I said, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, he did it when, during the pandemic and you couldn't get wood fences.
Right.
So he originally wanted a wood fence, and I think that that's what was originally approved by the BZA. And then he switched it to white vinyl, and he asked me if it was okay, and I said, I'm not crazy about it. He says, okay, I'll plant in front of it, I'll be right. And he did a beautiful job, yeah, so.
Alright, so if, if, if Mary Jo wants to do some research on this, that's great. You can report back to board your findings.
I mean, one thing we could recommend is if you have a white vinyl fence, you have to put some shrubs in front of it. Or if it's a bunch of neighbor's property, you have to put shrubs on the neighbor's side so that it softens the look of the white vinyl fence. Yeah, I mean, maybe we tweak it.
Why don't you come back with some suggestions? You can work with Frank since Frank doesn't seem like anyone.
You can find other jurisdictions where they have instructions to see what they can.
Well, Muncie Park would be the gold standard.
You speak too much, Frank, you get the assignment.
We're not going there, right?
You made some good point.
I know the harbor doesn't allow.
I know, that's the gold standard. Like I said.
Fences make you bigger.
But there must be like Plandome Manor and Plandome.
I like what you said with the Town of North Hempstead with the.
No, but that's, that's, that's on Landmark.
Only, all into.
I understand that, but that might still be.
Right, there's no reason why we couldn't legislate.
So I don't want to beat this.
Or fences.
Who wants to sit down with Mary Jo on this? Guys can come up with some suggestions. Any other new business, old business, trustees' reports? I will speak for Claire. She wanted to bring up that she spoke to Vincent Smith's school and they're going to do food drive again. So I will get that information and put it in the mayor's newsletter. Any other reports? Hempstead Harbor, Manhasset Bay?
I missed the Hempstead Harbor.
Alright.
There was something, oh, shoot. I have to send the link out to everyone. Manhasset Bay Protection Committee, they want to do a better job of educating the public on water quality issues. And so one of the things they want us to do is, one, is have our website have a link to their website.
I think it does.
Okay, cool.
Done.
And then, and then, you know, kind of, like, I mean, I would, I was even suggesting that, hey, why don't you come and come to one of our board meetings and kind of give us, you know, the latest that, I mean, besides me being the representative, having someone who's got, you know, a lot more knowledge than I do on this stuff, come and, and, and speak to us, but also that we, if we are an engaged board that's interested in supporting them and their efforts, that, you know, we become more advocates of this